It's six o'clock, we're calling the meeting order. I'm gonna look at Josh, he is being my assistant when it comes to microphone. Are they in the background?
Yeah.
We are all present as far as the board. And uh, we should start everything off with a pledge of allegiance. So I ask you to please stand in face of the flag, take off your hat, and join us. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the heavens, with liberty and justice for all. So we have one agenda change. Now, we the scheduled presenter of our call will not be with us this evening, so we could strike her name from the agenda. And having said that, unless anyone else has got an addition or a subscription in their overall, um, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda that you've shown.
I'll make a motion.
And on the motion, seconded by?
I'll say it.
Rebecca. Any other discussion? All in view of the agenda, will the amendment say aye?
Aye.
And opposed, carry it. Reports of community engagement. Does anyone on the board have anything? As far as attendance at community meetings, there often be meetings or some, but do you have anything?
Okay, um, we got a foundation that last week and planning for a movie night, which is this Saturday at John Birch Park, so thirty PM doors, movie at eight. And I was planning poker social, which will be on October second, at Mel Street before eight. Those are a couple of the main events they have coming up. And also there was a staff development today. And they have plans for the uh, workshop we for teachers next, starts on the thirty-first next week, and scheduling their after-school dates for personal development, um, staff development days, the L C Es, all that sort of thing. So they have a very, all agenda very made.
Questions? Yep, you want me?
Uh, we had a negotiations, we met several times with the uh, the district and uh, talks have gone on very well. We're moving right along, so I hope to continue that, Bob, and uh, resolve any kind of urgency.
Okay, the facility committee, I'm the substitute for the alternate on here. And uh, they had last, we, and the discussion was, uh, even though the referendum did not pass, we still have some obvious needs in the school and structural needs as well. And so, there was a conversation, we had people that have assisted us during that process. So, very preliminarily discussed our needs, so we could prioritize something as to what's absolutely needed for us right now, and what can be something down the road, so, um, just, just hope we get our facility meeting with no outcome. Questions? Um, next up would be the industry of board reports. And we'll, we'll cover them sequentially.
I'm not going first. I do. Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, just a shout out to the custodians, um, our buildings are shaping up amazingly, and um, that is awesome to see, having been back. We had a lot of things changed with furniture, um, over the last year, so being able to see it kind of come back to, a little bit to normal was kind of nice to see. And just, the floors, everything's sparkling, we're ready for a fresh start. Um, bomber day conferences, as you know, has replaced an open house at the elementary, uh, over the last, this will be our third year doing it. So our conference sign-up goes live tomorrow, those are in-person, uh, thirty-minute conferences at our uninterrupted time with your child's teacher. The last thing I did want to mention, um, I think it's important that you know our kindergarten class sizes right now. It's a bit of good news, but we have eighty-five, potentially eighty-six kindergarten students in four sections. That puts two of our sections at twenty-two and two at twenty-one. And I did just want to remind you of our class size guidelines. If over twenty-one, to consider additional teacher and/or instructional resources, and obviously the word consider, but I do want you to be aware of what those class sizes are at right now. That's all I have for the elementary.
Anything for Jen? Thank you. Tim? Middle school, high school, and technology.
Hi, good evening. Uh, just a couple of things for you to be aware of. This Wednesday will be our sixth grade bomber day, not to be confused with bomber day conferences at the elementary, even though this is, Chappie stole that term from the middle school, high school, that's all right. So we're having our sixth graders come in from nine o'clock to noon. Um, it's a, it's kind of a fun day for them to have the building to themselves. We do, we do tours, they've already had a tour, but just to freshen everybody's memory about where classrooms are, practice opening lockers, kind of go over what it's like to be a middle school student, how it's different from the elementary school, practice, like going through the lunch line and doing all those things, so that, uh, the sixth grade kids can hit the ground running on the first day of school, so we're excited about that. Um, also this year, um, there will be a special open house for sixth grade parents that evening, from six o'clock to eight o'clock, and that will start here in the auditorium, and then I believe that the plan is for them to kind of go through the kids' schedules, so that uh, parents can learn, uh, from the teachers about what each classroom is going to be like and what to expect, um, from, from teachers. Our, uh, whole middle school, high school open house will be held the following Wednesday, on September first, from five o'clock to seven o'clock. That's a time change from what we've done in the past, uh, based on what parents would ask us to do, just to be available a little bit later in the evening. But we'll, um, on that day, that will be the first day that, um, students in grades seven through twelve can come in and pick up schedules and pay fees and check out their lockers and make sure all that stuff works. As far as technology goes, uh, we're wrapping up three, um, kind of major changes to our student information system, um, that were done over the summer. Uh, one of them was a change in our communication system, so in the past, we use School Messenger, um, that company's product, to do our messaging, uh, by phone from emergency messaging to the community. Um, all of our messaging will go through Infinite Campus, um, starting this fall. So, uh, the admin team has already kind of gotten the lowdown on how to work that, and we'll work that through the secretaries in the rest of the building as well. The second big thing that we've done is, uh, we will have a new school store that I believe is operational now, but I have to check that with our tech support people. That will also be run through Infinite Campus, so parents can access that through their parent portal account. And the third big thing is, um, online registration. So, uh, online registration basically is gonna, uh, be a link for parents to go through and verify all of the information that we have about families and students, addresses, phone numbers, email addresses, all that kind of stuff, um, through the parent portal. Uh, the reason we're doing that this year is because of the change to campus messenger. We want to make sure that all of our contact information in Infinite Campus is correct, so that in, in case we do need to use that system, we've got as much up-to-date information as possible. Thank you.
Questions for Tim?
Reed? Just real quick, if you're speaking in the front mic, it's really probably also comes out public again, but Laura let me know that she can't really hear in the back when you're speaking in that mic, so please try to speak a little bit louder. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, just a quick update, fall sports started last week, we did also have a tennis match today, so competition is going this week. Looking out for game workers, especially at our soccer level, so I've been sending out emails to staff, and we'll be looking out for outside, uh, community support there as well. Found out at five o'clock, official shortage, we talked about it last week, or last month's board meeting, official shortage, I found out at five o'clock tonight that our association we use for soccer will not be able to cover our junior high event, so I'll have to be scrambling to look in front of that. So if anybody's interested, please, uh, contact me. Uh, we did offer the Cannon Kids Coordinator position to a candidate today, and they did accept, so they will be starting on Monday. Community Ed Fall Flyer is gonna go out the first week of school, much like the summer flyer did. Traditionally, we've used a brochure in the past that's gotten mailed out, however, we've had some instructors that have backed out and not want to do anything, so we're, or at this time, so we're gonna send out the flyer identically, identical process as we did the summer flyer. We'll send it out through Infinite Campus, we'll also send it home, uh, that first week of school to the pre-K five kids, and we'll also have some down at the senior center, as well as in our office. And last thing for you is, we do have a new, uh, mail trainer in place, his name is Wade Russell, he replaces Alex Eckner, who left for the cities.
Questions for Reed?
Thank you. Head of Operations Dave is on vacation this week, so I'll pass it down to the superintendent for his report.
Thank you, I would like to also echo Jeff's comments about the buildings looking fantastic, our custodial crews have done a fantastic job, uh, getting the buildings up and ready for our kids to come back. It's been nice to see, uh, kids running around, doing, uh, starting the activities, and also a lot of staff have been in and out, uh, recently, and so the buzz is starting to happen again in both buildings, which is exciting to see.
Uh, the only thing I really add aside to my normal agenda items is, um, information on a care clinic, uh, for dental services for families that qualify. We'll be starting these clinics in, uh, October, and we will have a spot where, uh, the Beatty County will be coming in once a week, starting in October, uh, to help children that qualify, provided cleaning, facilities, x-rays, ceilings, oral health, education referrals, and floor. I think this is a fantastic opportunity for these kids to get dental checkups they may not be normally getting on a regular basis. In your pack, also, there's some information on child and teen checkup eligible children, uh, from the ages of one to twenty years, and this is from two thousand and nineteen. And these are the percent dental, uh, service use up to this point, and if you look at, Beatty County does a push right now, and Beatty County to give these services out of the schools to help up that percentage of children getting, uh, dental care on a regular basis. Families can expect to get, uh, a form to fill out if they feel that they may qualify, uh, for this care clinic, and that'll be to turn back to the school, and we will be in touch with those families that are qualified to take part in this, so pretty excited about getting this started in both buildings. Other than that, there's all I have.
Anything for Jeff? Okay, moving along, public input. I'm gonna read you the disclaimer that comes with public input, then I'm gonna add a couple of things to it, and then we, we can begin some conversation. And it's gonna be one-way conversation, by the way, since public input, by definition, is your, your right to come up here and speak, uh, but there'll be no responses from the board, so, any questions you have might not be the best data we have here, but get your speaker piece. Due to data privacy concerns, a speaker may not address criticism toward an individual district employee during public input. Individual comment should be handled privately with building administrators and or the superintendent. Comments from visitors must be informational in nature and not exceed three minutes per issue. The board cannot engage in discussion or debate in those three minutes, but will take information and find answers if that is appropriate. As part of board protocol, it is unacceptable for any speaker to slander or engage in character assassination at a public board meeting. I realize that, uh, most of you here are for one topic, and, uh, normally, your public input, we, we focus on the topics that are on the agenda, so all we'll deal with this evening is agenda items, so if you have something that's not on the, uh, on the slate for this evening, we won't deal with that at this meeting, that'll give us opportunities. We'll adhere to a three-minute, uh, individual piece, anyone who's just to speak with that, I think after three minutes, um, the gist of what your opinions are will be known by them, and it allows other people to speak. We'll have thirty minutes of public forum, public input, because I think we will understand where you're going with this within that timeframe, and it will give people an opportunity to speak. If there is a common view here, I wish, please pay attention to others that are speaking, because if we get multiples on the same thought process, then it kind of slows us down a little bit and allows, doesn't allow for other people to speak. So, if, if people that speak echo your opinion, that's just fine, that's what we're looking for. This will be for district residents and parents, so if you, if you don't reside in our community, or if you don't have children in our community, and we do have time at the end, we can probably listen to your concerns, and otherwise, we'll keep it to the people that participate in our district. Again, just to reinforce, there's gonna be no response from us, because that's the appropriate way to do public input. Other than that, you know, there's certainly two sides to every, every coin, and, uh, to date, I think we've heard, we've heard from a lot of people, on texting, on emails, on personal conversations, so just understand, we've heard a great deal about this. And if the community response is what we've heard, there's a large percentage of people on either side of this, and what we try to do is, is, uh, listen to your concerns, but at the same time, understand that it's kind of a no-win situation for the district. Whatever decision is made here, could be to offend some people, or, or some people will be in disagreement, but whatever the situation is, it is a two, a two-side. Please keep that in mind. For that reason, uh, when people speak, if you're in disagreement, there won't be cheering, booing, or other, other things focused at the speaker, what we're trying to do is get both sides heard as they need to be heard. It isn't really fair for people to clap and cheer and give responses that could intimidate somebody on the other side of the coin. So, keep that in mind, and also keep in mind, if I can, I can cut out the public forum at any point in time, if things digress from what I think should be a professional meaning, decorum is at the top shelf, everything we're doing here. So, having said that, I would look for someone to get up and initiate some conversation. Luke? Luke, remember, you want to speak loudly and answer.
Perfect. Luke Wychel, um, community member, uh, parent. Luke Wychel, community member, parent, um, I also serve on the COVID committee, um, newly to the, to that, um, committee, thank you for your time, uh, today. I just would like to go back and kind of recap for the board, and also maybe the community members, the last two meetings that have happened with the COVID committee. I'll go as fast as I can to stand time. Meeting number one, August sixth, overall great meeting, great discussion, with about twenty community members present, most voicing concerns, experiences, and insight. After long discussion, the community voted unanimously to start the year in-person, unmasked, five days a week. We also decided we would follow, we would recommend to the board to follow requirements handed down from the state, CDC, county, et cetera. Recommended, recommendations from these groups would be exactly that, recommended and not required. With the understanding we have the ability to meet at any time, as situations develop and change, we also discussed that quarantine guidelines from the state were not yet updated, and we'd likely have to meet again soon. Standard meetings would be planned, would apply to be quarterly. Morale in the room was through the roof, community and committee alike. Meeting two, August nineteenth, updated quarantine recommendations have been released, and we met. In the body of the meeting invite to the committee, it states, "We would like to meet next Thursday, August nineteenth, at seven-thirty in the morning, in the high school auditorium to discuss quarantine guidelines, as they were not specified at our last meeting. Have a great weekend." We start the meeting reviewing the latest case numbers from Beatty County. The county representative was there to share those numbers. Following that data being given, given out, the leader of the school made a recommendation that we continue down our path of our original recommendation, that we discussed and unanimously passed, while we monitor numbers, and coming up with a plan, if we reach X percent, we need to figure out another plan, whether that be masking, what have you. He was quickly shot down by some committee members for that recommendation, one resubmitted just two weeks prior. Discussion continued, ultimately ending with a motion in the second to change the recommendation to the board to start the year masked with an agreement, that if positive tests are below two percent, masks can come off. Each building to run separate from one another. Motion passed without discussing quarantine. When asked why we never discussed our original plan in quarantine, which is what the meeting was to be about, it was suggested that there is no quarantine for close contacts that are unmasked. We also know that if you are unmasked, there is no, um, requirement that you close contact quarantine. We also briefly talked about this in the first meeting, and nobody made a motion to do it then. If we fall below two percent and mask comes off, we have no plan or recommendation to give the board, because we didn't talk about it, and it was on the agenda. Furthermore, it was asked, if two percent is our threshold, why aren't we starting the year at zero percent and unmasked? I was told we have to assume there's asymptomatic kids, or that we're coming to school sick. That tells me a couple of things, we either don't trust our students and parents to monitor their health, or we're always going to assume it's two percent or greater of asymptomatic kids in the building, which would mean we'd never fall below the threshold and be masked the entire year. Two percent being our number was agreed on based off no science or educated reasoning. We talked to them from two percent to five percent. It was discussed the bomber academy had two students test positive out of roughly eight hundred students. Change. While I believe the recommendation was changed, was based on slight increases in cases in Beatty County and Cannon Falls, also citing were some suggestions of schools in the south having some issues when returning to school. No specific schools, no specific data to support this. I was left with the following questions. How could our recommendation as a committee change so drastically based off rising numbers in the county which are rising, that are not drastic? It honestly felt that I missed the meeting, that there was a meeting prior to this meeting, and it caught me off-guard. It also leave, it caught, it caught, um, a leader of the school off-guard, because he made the original recommendation to continue down our path. If for some reason you do take this new recommendation that was passed, why aren't we starting at zero percent cases? Why assume these kids are lying and showing up sick at day one? And if they're asymptomatic, it's nobody's fault, and certainly doesn't come against our two percent, because they have no idea they have it. You are giving them a chance out of the gate. If you could just please not look at cases anymore, it'd be much appreciated. Look at the real concerning numbers, hospitalizations and deaths. Children's Hospital and American Academy of Pediatrics released a phone. Child mortality rate, zero percent, child hospitalization rate, one percent. These are based on all kids nineteen and under in Minnesota, vaccinated, unvaccinated, compromised immune systems, white, black, et cetera. The kids are thriving through this. Why punish them for those that choose not to be vaccinated, are based off people older than nineteen? If you're worried about spread coming home, those people had their chance to protect themselves with a vaccine. Furthermore, have you asked those unvaccinated people, I'm willing to bet, they'll tell you it's their choice not to be, and they still believe a kid should be in school unmasked.
Luke, that's five.
Okay, appreciate it. Lastly, I would just like to say, ah, let's get, five minutes.
Let's talk three minutes, and just remind you of that. Once again, classic hearing intimidates another side. We've already discussed it one time, we won't discuss it again, we can close probably. Any question? So, we'll set up, we'll set on three minutes, and we'll push forward, that only last to watch paper, but we'll try our best.
Thanks, Bob. I love this town, I love this community, I've lived on the east coast, and I've traveled the country. I've met all sorts of people, but nothing beats the people who make this community great. But I can't believe I'm standing here tonight, I can't believe this is something the board wants to consider. I want what's best for my children, but that is responsibility, that should be left solely to my wife and I. In my household, we like to critically think, given the facts presented to us. A few facts that come to mind, less children under the age of eighteen have died from COVID than the flu in two thousand and eighteen, or two thousand and nineteen. More children have died from gunfire in Minneapolis this last summer than from COVID. Children are virtually immune, and therefore masks are not needed. I appreciate the board's concern for the children, but it's not your responsibility to enforce these senseless measures. Listen to all these parents here tonight, I'm sure it'll be pretty obvious what the majority of parents and the community members want who showed up tonight. I just heard the board say there are two sides, and I agree. However, it's not your responsibility to decide what's best for my child. Please do what is right, and allow parents to make the decision on what's best for their children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, my name is Megan Johnston Flanders.
You might have to speak a little bit longer.
So, um, I would say that everyone in this room has the same goal, we all want our kids to be in school the entire year, five days a week, taught by their teachers and not parents at home. I believe very strongly to accomplish this, you need to have universal masking of all of the students and the staff. Currently, the Delta variant is the dominant variant in the state and in our area, it is a thousand times more infectious than, uh, the original strain. This means that anytime a person talks, laps, coughs, they are spewing a thousand times more virus particles out into the environment. Um, we also know that individuals can spread COVID before they have symptoms, up to two days before they have symptoms. And we know that COVID is more readily spread indoors than outdoors. This means that one asymptomatic, asymptomatic infected individual walking around the school could easily infect numerous other people before they have symptoms. Masks have been shown to be a very key component to slowing the spread of COVID. And therefore, the American Academy of Pediatrics describes that the best way to slow the spread and to keep our kids safe is to have universal masking of staff and students. I am in a way trying to downplay the challenges of masking, it is very real, it is not easy, but when you take a step back and look at the big picture, I really feel that universal masking is going to be the best way to keep our kids safe, but also to keep them in school. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Paul Jeff, I have, uh, four kids, and I have two that go to Cannon Falls. Evidence, science, data, facts, common sense. Science is an activity that seeks to explore the natural world using well-establishedly defined methods. Given the complexity of the universe, from the very big to very small, from inorganic to organic, there's a vast array of scientific disciplines, each with its own specific techniques. Number of different specializations is constantly increasing, leading to more questions in areas of exploration than ever before. Science expands our understanding rather than limiting it. Scientism is a slight specter to the worldview of the ultimate reality of the universe and its meaning. Despite the fact that there are millions of species on the planet, scientism focuses on the important amount of its attention, on human behavior and beliefs, rather than working within a careful, constructive boundaries and methods established by research. Rather than working within a characteristic boundaries and methods established by research, it rapidly generalizes entire fields of academic expertise and dismisses many of them as a theory. With scientism, you regularly hear explanations that rely on words like merely, only, simply, nothing more than scientism restricts human inquiry. COVID poses almost no risk for our children at all. Over four million kids have tested positive for COVID. Point zero zero eight of them have died. Four hundred and eighty kids have died from flu in the two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen season. That is more than a dying COVID in the last year and a half. Did we wear masks in two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen? Knowing enough, this is much more dangerous than kids with COVID. Thirty-eight million reported flu cases in two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty. One thousand eight hundred and twenty-two reported flu cases in two thousand and twenty-one. And you wonder, there have been hundreds of studies, peer-reviewed papers, randomized control trials, research proving the effectiveness of masks and side effects, implications of pro-life if they're wearing masks. Study after study shows that there's no measurable difference against transmission of viral infections, even in ninety-five minutes, which get their name because ninety-five percent of the particles having a diameter of point three microns are filtered by the mask forward by the wearer by use of electrostatic mechanisms are not effective. Coronavirus particles are approximately zero point one two five microns in diameter. Wearing masks all day increases the rate of infection due to weakened immune system during mask use. Surgeons have found that lower oxygen saturation after surgeries, even as for short as twenty minutes. Low oxygen induces hypoxia, inducible factor one alpha. This is a term down the road related to CD4 T cells. T cells can turn unnecessarily viral for immunity. Asymptomatic also been proven it's a farce, it's not real. Thank you for your time.
I'm not quite as articulate as him. My name is Stacy Wegman and I also don't prepare speeches, so bear with me. A couple of things to just touch on that other folks have already said. Megan Johnston brought it up that we don't want people teaching their kids at home. I can assure you that that's true. As a homeschool parent, I've caught up quite a bit of flack for having my kids home, as I'm sure some of my friends over here have too. People often say that our kids are going to feel socially isolated. How are they going to know how to do certain things in life? Things like that. I assure you those are all false. Our kids are pretty well adjusted. And I should say my kids have gone to a mix of homeschool and Cannon Falls. But I assure you that a lot of the homeschooling stuff is, that people think is true is just, it's just not true. However, since most people kind of feel that way about people teaching their own kids, we should probably keep our kids in school. If we're going to send them home every time somebody has a little cough and isolate them for fourteen days and all that. Another school district was, you know, sending one sibling home because she was sitting two seats closer to an infected student on the bus than her brother. But then they go home and play together and brother gets to go to school and sister doesn't. You know, like Luke said, we're basing our decisions on no data and no science. Let's start to make some sense. I've got a kiddo myself who has asthma, like you, I can't remember his name, but like the last guy said about the oxygen saturation. My son has not had asthmatic symptoms since we sandbagged Cannon Falls, I think nine years ago. And now he has asthma symptoms again. He's a cross-country runner who has worked very hard to get his lung capacity where it is. And wearing a mask is stifling his ability to breathe. I know that a lot of people think that that's not true, but I assure you when I wake up with my coughing fourteen-year-old on a nightly basis because he does not have the same lungs that even I do, I assure you that it is true. I was also driving some teenagers home tonight and asked them what they thought because I think that we should also be taking into consideration how our kids feel. And if they're feeling like wearing a mask is stifling their learning. And I think one of the gals summed it up best by saying, "Well, we've said what we thought, but nobody listens to us anyway. So, if they're going to make me wear a mask this year, I guess I'll just have to do that." Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Amber Garrett and I'm a parent of three students at Cannon Falls High School and Real School, a seventh grader, a junior, and a foreign exchange student that comes to us from Ukraine. I'm here to speak to you as a parent and to see if you can make the right decision about masking our kids. Last year was the worst year of school for my kids. Between masking, quarantine, distance learning, and the uncertainty from week to week, it was emotionally and mentally draining for all of us. I'm not sure that my kids actually learned anything last year. With all the technical issues and everything, they were barely technically in class. My kids have spent the entire summer hanging out with friends. They hang out in each other's homes. They go, we go out to eat, we go shopping, we meet new people, we lived our lives mask-free. Masks are not required in public settings, as of today, which school is. And I'm not saying that families who feel that masking is right for them should change their minds. They have every right to take care of their own family's health and wellbeing and so do I. I am my child's parent. I decide what to do when they are sick. I help keep them healthy by deciding what that entails. The school administration is not my kids' guardian. Neither is the government at the local, state, or federal level. Parents still have the final say over medical treatment for their minor children, or at least they should. Last year, when my daughter stayed home sick, we were told in order for her to return to school, she must either test negative for COVID or get an alternate diagnosis. Her symptoms were simply an upset stomach. While I found the request to be ridiculous, I took her to the doctor. He provided a note saying that he had seen her and she was fine to return to school. This was not satisfactory to the district. He had failed to diagnose her. When there is no illness, what does the school propose our doctors do? Make something up? This is all getting out of hand. Each family, along with their doctor, should be able to make medical decisions for their own family. The CDC, WHO, Minnesota Department of Health, and our school district do not get to tell me how to take care of my family. They cannot demand that we outfit our children with medical devices that have not been proven effective. There is no law on the books that I can find that give any of these entities the right to coerce us into compliance against our wishes. Our district is hemorrhaging enrollment. Many families left after seeing how poorly the administration handled the situation last year. A new building is not enough to stop people from seeing administrative waste and political agenda. More families will leave. Those who don't have the option to leave this school may choose to reduce support through limited involvement or by continued outspokenness against the administration. I've never been silent about my disdain for people who lord themselves over others, who choose to virtue signal and act like they care more about others while at the same time trying to undermine people's beliefs and choices through manipulation of information. If the masks worked, how did so many kids get COVID last year while at school from their classmates and teachers? If masks worked, the school would have been the last place it would have spread because everyone was forced to mask up there. Aside from the fact that many families have already had COVID, many others have chosen vaccination. Those with naturally occurring immunity or the store-bought variety should have nothing to fear. And those who choose to can still wear masks. I'm not proposing taking that option away, but it should be our choice, not yours.
My name is Bonnie Co Austin. I've been in education for seventeen years. The past nine years, I've worked at Park High School in Cottageville, Minnesota, teaching industrial tech, also known as shop. I have been immersed in this pandemic as a public educator. I have witnessed firsthand the struggles endured by students during distance learning, during lockdowns, and within the hybrid model. There were victories during that difficult time, but it is when the schools are buzzing with young minds physically in the buildings that we see the most emotional and educational success. I have a second grader attending Cannon Falls Elementary this fall and he loves school. He loves his teachers and is a social butterfly. Lady was born with severe asthma, visits a pulmonary specialist twice a year at Children's and was hospitalized multiple times before the age of five. There were times when he was on oxygen for days and lay not awake for longer than twenty-two hours with numbers as low as seventy-five. Lane's triggers, which we have concluded, the main trigger is viral infections such as RSV, Coup, the flu, and obviously COVID-19. A common cold that may cause a runny nose in one child may begin as a runny nose for Lane and quickly will dissipate to the state. Do I call the doctor, rerun to the ER, or do we dial nine-one-one? As many of us are nervous about the vaccine and the side effects it may cause, there are many of us that are concerned for the new Delta variant. We are learning new information daily. What we know is that the strand spreads much faster, is impacting more children under the age of twelve, and that our hospitals are failing fast quickly. When lightning strikes during a baseball game, we stop the game and we wait for the storm to pass. It's the right thing to do. One in five hundred thousand people get struck by lightning. But yet, we do it for that warmth because it's the right thing to do. When we're on an airplane and the pilot gets on and states, "We're about to endure turbulence. Sit down, fasten your seatbelt." Now, I personally don't know anyone that was killed during turbulence, but I do know that it can prevent others from falling on one another, hurting each other, hurting their friends, hurting the passengers next door, hurting a stranger, hurting themselves. Yet we do it because it's the right thing to do. This is a time you need to come together as a community and protect the most vulnerable students in the district. Those eleven and under do not have an option or a choice to be vaccinated. And those kids need to be in the building. We know that wearing masks protects transmission. And we know that it is the most detrimental for child's health to not be in school. I can agree wearing a mask is not fun. We had nine hundred kids come through our shop classes last year. It was hot, it was sweaty, their shop glasses would fog up. Not one complained, but we had designated mask break areas. Kids can go outside. Get them outside. We had a whole outdoor classroom. I'm asking the community to set their differences aside, make a very small sacrifice for their classmates, for their friends. This too, like a storm, shall pass. Once vaccines are available for eleven and under, we'll have another option and we can revisit this until wearing masks is what is needed to keep all children safe in the school.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Patricia Reed. I have a degree in education and have taught children for over twenty-five years. My family is in favor of student and parental choice when it comes to masks in the school. We have an immune-compromised second grader. He has Down Syndrome. And I still believe other methods of improving our son's immune system are more beneficial than covering his airways all day long. We give our child fish oil, probiotics, essential oils, elderberry syrup, adequate sleep, and proper nutrition, just to name a few methods to improve immune function. We will likely send our son for therapy only if masks are required all day long. There are many wonderful families who have already left the school district based on policies of the school administration since COVID. This is truly a great loss. On another note, faculty and administrators do not need to share their political affiliations, religious beliefs, sexual preferences, or other personal matters with students. This is the parent's job to teach, not the staff. I believe we are to show honor to all people. All people include our children. I also believe schools were established to serve children and their parents, not to promote social agendas or serve teachers. Individuals can refer to laws that support their behavior, but in a school, the students' rights should overrule a teacher's. A transgender student or teacher can and should use a single bathroom elsewhere in the building, not force acceptance of their...
The agenda items tonight, it's not just soapbox. This is not our agenda.
Okay. I just want to know when do the girls' feelings matter and how you plan to remedy the situation with the bathroom usage, please? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Matt Delphard. I'm a taxpayer here in Cannon Falls. I also represent an additional fifty-six community members, relatives, and taxpayers who have signed a petition supporting parents' choice to mask their kids this year or not. Or not. Is that better? Okay. I've emailed this to your district administrative assistant for you to look at. I submit to you tonight that I do not know everything there is to know about COVID-19 and how to best battle it. Depending on what a person believes, which is largely influenced by one's sources they find reliable in their own experiences, people come to their own conclusions about masks and their effectiveness. What I do know is there are genuine people who want first and foremost what is best for our children on both sides of this debate. I don't find the science settled either way. Giving our parents the choice to mask or not mask, their children recognize this. Thank you for your service to our school and looking out for our children's wellbeing.
Hi, my name is Jackie Flanders and I'm on say, I am here today as a concerned parent and citizen of the community. I am asking the board to stand with and advocate for parents' rights, individuality, and personal choice. Parents know their children and home situation best. We have the right to choose whether or not to send our children to school with a mask or vaccine. There is a risk in everything we do. The virus is a risk, but it is also taking the vaccine and it is wearing a mask. Students, parents, and staff deserve the freedom to choose what their right is for their health and their situation. We know the coronavirus spreads by aerosol articles, particles, which are actually small enough to go through a mask. A recent German study followed twenty-five thousand children wearing masks and found sixty percent increase in irritability as well as a major increase in headaches and fatigue. It also found a majority decreased in concentration happiness and the ability to learn. Long-term mask use also contribute to an increased susceptibility to bronchitis, to decay and gum decay, which is interesting since that was part of the board's thing tonight on dental health. The blood gas irregularity. During a mask mandate last year, miscarriages were up six hundred percent. I care about the young, expected mothers and teachers we have here in Cannon Falls. Please do not mask our children. Also, masks, children reach up and touch their mask, which then they touch their eyes, they're passing germs onto their eyes. Wearing masks, you inhale air into your eyes, which generates damp comfortability and then you touch the mask. All I'm asking is that you let us, the parent, decide whether our children are masked or not.
Mark's lone resident on the district. I actually didn't come with the prepared notes, but I did bring some data.
Mark looked that up. Test this.
The first thing I brought, I'll just read it to you. It's the July first, two thousand and twenty-one. It's a new report published by American Medical Association's Journal. Basically, the study measured carbon dioxide levels of forty-five children ages six through seventeen while wearing masks. The normal content of carbon dioxide in the air is about four hundred parts per million with anything over two thousand parts per million considered unacceptable by the German federal environmental officers. The JAMA report measured averages of thirteen thousand one hundred and twenty to thirteen thousand nine hundred and ten parts per million of carbon dioxide in the inhaled air of children wearing masks, which is over six times higher than the unsafe threshold. The study further pointed out that this measurement was only after three minutes that this measurement was only after three minutes of wearing a mask. Children forced to wear masks at school find themselves wearing masks for hours, five times a day. The JAMA report follows a larger German survey of over 25,000 children, which found 68% reporting to have problems wearing facial coverings. Most of this is caused by the elevated carbon dioxide levels because of the dead space between the mask, which collects the exhale carbon dioxide quickly after a short time. Now, skip down to the end. When we suggest that decision-makers, you folks apparently have made a decision based on Mr. Winchell's summary of the two meetings that were held, saying that the hard evidence produced by these experimental measurements suggests that children should not be forced to wear masks. And I'll leave this copy with you if you want. And then I also brought with me, this is dated 21 August 2020. It's from the World Health Association, or organization. And they did a study, who in unicef advised to follow? Children aged 5 years and under should not be required to wear masks. This is based on the safety and overall interest of the child and the capacity to probably use a mask with minimum assistance. We've got the O document here. If you're questioning what I'm reading. Who in unicef advised that decision to use masks for children aged 6 to 11 should be based on the following factors? And based on Mr. Winchell's summary of the meetings for this, I didn't hear any of these factors of being a consideration for the decision that was made. The first one is whether there's a widespread transmission in the area where the child's right resides. I didn't hear anything in Goodyear County in this area that has widespread transmission of this area. The ability of the child to safely and appropriately use the mask. I don't know, who here at the school board, teachers, is there any education on educating kids on how to wear masks properly? Haven't heard it or seen it. Access to masks as well if the laundry, replacement of masks in certain sections of school and childcare services. Is a school going to provide regular replacement of masks for kids at schools? One of the reports I read that the moisture in the mask from breathing into the mask takes away the effectiveness, and they shouldn't be wearing masks more than an hour. I adhere anything the school board providing, clean masks, or training for kids to wear masks appropriately. Adequate adults provision instructions to the child on how to put on, take off, and safely wear the mask. Potential impact of wearing a mask on learning and physiosocial development in consultation with teachers, parents, caregivers, and/or medical providers. Specific settings and interactions the child has with other people who are at high risk of developing serious illness such as elderly and those with underlying health conditions. There's a couple of folks up here reporting their kids have asthma and stuff, but I didn't hear anything in what the proposal is, at least from Mr. Winchell's summary of how you're going to isolate some of these kids that may shouldn't be wearing masks and ought to keep distance and people that might have means to be effective. I didn't hear any of this. This is a government document. I'll provide it to you if you wish.
Mark, we need you to close today. Make your summary and then we need you to close.
That is my summary.
All right.
My summary is we need to do a better job of what you're proposing. The other thing is, who's going to be liable for a child that has some of these problems? The school district? Because you're mandating masks? Thank you.
We committed to 30 minutes. It's been more than 30 minutes. Would you please, both of you have been patiently waiting. I would like you to close out for us. Would you please, 3 minutes? Sure.
Thank you. I'm Pam Collins, and I'm here because I'm a grandmother of three students here in the district. Well, and I live in Cannon Falls. And there are a couple of things that I just want to clarify here. And I see that there's been a false dilemma presented. Either we wear masks or we can't go to school. And a number of people have outlined a lot of the problems having to do with wearing masks. You know, you're re-inhaling the CO2 and other toxins at dangerous levels. You're, and it's seriously, of course, decreasing the oxygen that you can take in. It's kids with asthma, especially hard to handle when they have to wear the masks. They become soaking wet during the day. I don't know if you've ever smelled one of your kid's masks at the end of the day. They're full of mucus and spit and germs, and then they're in a moist environment. It's a perfect breeding ground for germs. It's preventing their social development, reading, observing human expressions, facial expressions, especially in these formative years when they need this. And we're teaching our kids to be afraid of the very air that they breathe and to be afraid of each other when outside of school, they're playing with each other and they're able to interact socially. So why is it different when you're in the school? But here to me is the crux, and to me, it's the elephant in the room, that why aren't people talking about this? Are masks effective? Now, I tell you, we have a bunch of masks in our house. And every single solitary mask that my grandson has ever worn to school or anywhere else, or that anybody in my family has ever worn, on the package, it says, "Not for medical use." Every single one. You go home and look at the packages that your masks are coming out of. I just got some at Walmart the other day, and there it said, "Not for medical use." And the reason is because the weed in the masks are so much bigger than the aerosols of the virus that's going through the air. That's the danger, is these aerosols. The masks aren't stopping a dad bird thing. But what they are doing, it's like, you know, trying to stop a gnat with a tennis racket. The only thing that could stop it is if you have a well-fitted medical N95 mask, and then you would be able to stop it. But then, of course, you wouldn't be able to breathe in an environment that isn't highly oxygenated like it would be, for example, in a hospital setting where they do have to wear the N95 masks. So I guess, in summary, all I'm saying is that there are many, many parents, and I see that we're represented here, that are well-educated, they're well-informed, and they believe that the best choice for their children, based on scientific data, scientific information, is that their choice is their kids don't wear masks to school. If a parent wants their child to wear masks to school, well, I'm not going to argue with them, but that's their choice. It's not our choice. And it's not up to you, it's not up to anybody else to tell that parent to do what they believe is not the best thing for their child. Thanks.
Hello there. My name is Crystal. I have two children that go to the Cannon Falls School District. And I'm in here of support for universal masking here at the Cannon Falls Schools District. These are recommendations that were put forth by the CDC, Minnesota Department of Health, and other medical experts to prevent the spread of COVID-19 to our children and our community at large. As an RN, I have consistently been assisting COVID patients of all ages and health levels to recover and find resources to assist them in recovery. Unfortunately, not everyone survives, as noted by the data of over 600,000 people who have lost their lives. It is also a fact that since the start of COVID pandemic, the Delta variant is affecting more children, resulting in hospitalization with use of ventilators. This information heightens my concerns with the start of the upcoming school year with unvaccinated children and adults coming together in a building unmasked. Another concern is that if there is no preventative measures to contain or stop the spread in our school system, schooling will go back to distance learning, which does not benefit my child or anyone else's. A lot of children learn better in a school setting, and distance learning is crippling our children's academic potential. A proactive approach by following the recommendations presented by highly educated experts clearly appears to be the best approach in keeping our children and community safe. The safety of all children in a public school setting should be the highest priority to avoid illness and/or death. In conclusion, please think about the catastrophic effects your decision will have on our children and your staff. We all need to put our political beliefs aside and look at the factual information and follow the recommendations to enhance the safety of our children and our community. Taking the side of caution is never regretted when it comes to human lives. Let's not take the chance with our children and our school community. Thank you.
Thank you. Clinton, you remember this. That was the last one, but I know that we were spoken, and he said, "I'm going to be here." So, it's ending with you.
My name is Clinton Shogwiss. I have four children in the Cannon Falls school system. I am a pro-choice for masks for our children. I attended the COVID committee meeting on Thursday last week and seen the main distinction between having masks or not having masks is if we don't have masks, then there's a close contact, and there's a close contact, and that person needs to quarantine, compared to if we have masks, then the close contacts don't need to quarantine. I asked the question, is this a state rule or a federal rule? Or is this our rule on the quarantine? I was told this was a recommendation. There are lots of recommendations that we are given on a daily basis, which includes diets, exercise, sleep, etc., that most people here probably do not follow, including myself. This led me to the question, out of all the close contacts that got sent home to quarantine last year, how many tested positive? I was given an answer of "some", which quickly changed to "quite significant." I said, "You just told me 'some', and now how do you change to 'quite significant'?" So which is it? They said, "Quite significant." So then I asked, "What is the percentage or the numbers?" They couldn't give me an answer. I would think that that would be a key stat for us to keep track of. Moving on, I asked how many students and faculty members were hospitalized after contracting COVID. One person started saying that there was one person that got pretty sick. I asked again, "How many hospitalized?" The answer was zero. I looked up one of the tools that apparently the school is using to check on transmissions rates and found that Goodyear County is at 235 cases for every 100,000 people over the last seven days. That is .235%. Not 2.35%, .235%. And that's considered high transmission. According to the data that they use, a high transmission rate is .1% over seven days. To put this percentage into perspective, I looked up the top 10 odds of dying in the U.S. According to the New York Times, you have a 1 in 103 chance of dying in a car accident. This is just about a 1% chance that this will happen to you. I'm guessing most of you drove here today. Did you think about the stat before you got in your vehicle to come here? The real eye-opener for me on this list was suicide. 1 in 88, according to the report. That is higher than 1%. That is the number that I'm worried about way more for my kids than COVID. The increase in mental health disorders that is coming from this COVID situation and the increasing number of suicide amongst kids. For the record, COVID did not make the top 10 list. Luke already said one stat there. All of us know that COVID is real, but these stats show that it isn't affecting the children that much. Let us parents choose what's best for our kids, and let's move forward. COVID's a virus, and it's not going anywhere. And we need to learn to move past this, and let's quit making the kids think that school is a scary place to be. In closing, I think it should be the parents' choice if the kids wear masks or not. And I think that there shouldn't be any quarantines for close contacts. And I also think that there shouldn't be any percentage value or number value that makes us either go to all masking or distance learning without a state or federal mandate. Let's get back normal. Thank you for your time. God bless, and go Bombers!
Thank you. We will close public input for now, and we will discuss this in 15 minutes when we get it out to that item. So next on our agenda is consideration to approve the financial report. Have you got any for Mr. Glimes?
Try to go short and sweet here and definitely keep it under three to five minutes. The Finance Committee report here has been pretty short in terms of not a lot of information as we are now getting to our audit portion of closing up the books for fiscal '21, moving into fiscal '22. So what you have is just the cash flow worksheet of the district, where we sit at in terms of cash on hand. The top would be the bank account balances. And as you kind of go through the sheet, you see revenues, maybe ideas. Those are the funds we receive from the state of Minnesota to fund education. And generally, we see is majority, about 80% to 85% of our funding is through state in the debt mechanism. I also see a bunch of things, such as payroll, payroll tax in the HSA, which is the majority of what goes out the door each month for our bills. One thing that you will note that may be a lot different in summer time or early fall are the leases, bus leases, tech leases, and those sorts of items. Generally, we have been structured to come early as we receive more of our funding beginning of fiscal year as the budget opens up. Quite a few bus leases in our district as well as tech, as our one-to-one device initiative throughout the district. This is not a whole lot of information as we are in the process of getting audited. That's a time-consuming effort in the building right now. There'll be more to come. And hopefully, with audits coming in this week, we're looking at having a wrap-up time of presenting to the board what the October board... If you have any questions, I'd do my best to answer what you have.
Anyone have any questions, Josh? And Bill, you have a motion to approve the financial report. Show what you're saying. And bill your devotion to approve the financial report, show what you're saying.
I'll second.
And then on the second, a good discussion. All in favor of approval of the financial report, show and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then it passes 6-0. Consent agenda. Ideas under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any of these items singularly, it can be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. As a rule, Jeff likes to recognize the donations or gifts.
Yes, this month we do have one donation listed for $500 in the Mankato period of compensation, and that donor requested that they use that money for the golf program. So thank you to the Mankato period donation.
Anybody have any questions, concerns that they'd like to bring up in their consent agenda? If not, when you're ready to approve, make a motion, please do so.
I'll make the motion too for a second.
Okay, you have a motion, we're back on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, carry. Strategic planning review.
The board is asking to bring this back for review every so often to keep it in front of the board, reminding them of our strategic priorities. Oh, yeah, obviously have access to this. You can see updates that we have the first strategic priority is to develop and implement a comprehensive communication plan. That is currently in progress, especially with the marketing committee getting up and removing. We would need more frequently every recently. We will be having a facilities school for EU, and I don't know if Anna and Rebecca are going to touch on any of that as we go through this, or how the board wants to talk about that, but that is one of the items that the marketing committee has talked about. The second item that we have for strategic priorities is to increase the fund balance to ensure that the district's financial stability within board policy. That has been an ongoing process here over the last few months as well. The third item is to develop a monitoring facilities plan and budget that includes a maintenance program that has been ongoing as well. I think we're getting closer to that, especially more recently with the Altai of the capital sheet to bring that in line with the dollars that we have. The fourth item is developing a safety plan that includes mental wellness and secure facilities. And the fifth item is to develop collaborative career and college readiness opportunities with giving safety program needs assessment and more in-house STEM programming are some of the goals. Any questions or comments about the strategic plan? Basically, it was just a review of the management and kind of the process.
Any additions or updates? I'm going to speak to them.
I think that's marketing.
Set down. I'm going to have to hand it down.
I think that Jeff mentioned the marketing committee last Friday, and we talked about the issues of the school EU in terms of being able to promote certain stories that are happening here. It's a little lack of things happening in the classroom, and it's been working with them to do this to be able to push those stories out to the community, which I think will be really exciting, and we're looking forward to increased community engagement through that platform. Can I have a word? I'm really excited about it, so if you don't follow us on Facebook, you probably should because it's good content to show you.
Or like, it's a like, like on Facebook.
Sure. Anything to add?
No.
Okay. It shows an action, I don't know if it's really an update or an example. So, okay, no action needed on the strategic plan, it's more discussion. Consideration to approve the architect contract.
This should have been approved back in April, but for some reason it got in this. It worked with our attorney record on getting this contract ready to go for highest key to do a facility planning process that we just got to talking about, and a strategic plan. Really, the costing in there is only if there's an approved project at this point. And so there is a redline change document that shows what was changed through their attorney, and then there's also a final copy of the contract for your, who the tenant did. Like I mentioned before, I did over the attorney on this to get that straightened out and remind him of what we want to do with this.
So procedure. Are you up here, right?
Yeah. Okay, this should have been back in the board's business.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the architect contract for that's a connection?
I'll make the motion.
We're back on the motion.
I'll second.
Seconded by Brendan.
I'll do discussion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Consideration to approve the truth and taxation date of December 20th, 2021 at 6:00 p.m. in the board room.
This is a yearly item that we set a truth and taxation date, and this is the recommended date that we got agreed to then to approve, put that on calendar.
Look for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Anna, on the motion, do you hear second?
I'll second.
Rebecca, on the second. We are approving the truth and taxation date as December 20th in the boardroom at 6:00 p.m. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Consideration to approve the 2122 restrictive procedures plan from GCPB.
As stated, this is the restrictive procedures plan and gap for our students in special needs, and this is a required item here for the board to approve, and those updates are done through legal certification and also GCPB.
Any comment here from GCPB folks?
No. It's all, the only thing that changed that was the date. There was no changes to the policy from previous years.
Okay. Looking for a motion to approve when you're ready.
I'll make a motion too.
Any other motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brendan. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carry. Consideration to approve the sample 2122 resolution regarding the adoption of health and safety measures. This is why you're here this evening. Jeff, I hand it off to you.
Sure, MSBA has a resolution for the board to complete, as you can see, with some of the highlighted areas where we have to insert a distinct number, and also some of the different sections depending on the board decides tonight whether we can fill in after the meeting by the board. But really, the requirements that the board needs to look at tonight is one, prevention strategies, which the COVID advisory committee did talk about in essence with the physical distancing, hand washing, respiratory etiquette, cleaning, and disinfecting contractors. Basically, we're going to still be doing the same steps to keep our building clean for this year, and operating, sanitizing, and again, be educating kids on how to wear masks properly if they are intending to wear a mask or if they're required to wear a mask. We will again be educating kids on how to properly hand wash as we do each year as well. So that is the first part of the prevention strategy, and now we're going to follow through that again. Masking options, COVID advisory committee is recommending the first option on this list with the blue added metric in there as well. The item that was talked about previously was item four from the October 6 meeting where masking was recommended. And then the third option that the board needs to decide on is vaccinations. And at this point, we're recommending that all staff should be vaccinated, but obviously they were recorded unless that said person did not do vaccine because of medical condition or a sincerely ill or religious disability.
So when we get down to it, our discussion is mostly around the masking part of this, correct?
Yeah, and you know, with the masking, if you choose to mask, that takes the close contact quarantines off the table with the mask being worn properly with kids, which they should be, if it would be required. If there are no masking, then the recommendation from the CDC is to have parents decide, you know, we need to inform parents if their child is a close contact. In all pieces, we would be sending a positive case home for 10 days, and then if there is no required masking, the parents would be notified if their kid is a close contact and then the child, it would be a parent decision from there if that was a decision. And then obviously, there's some different options from between then, but as of right now, the COVID committee is recommending this option right here.
Does anyone wish to speak to this before? Well, we're speaking about it now, I guess, I mean, options would be either to go with the recommendation of the COVID advisory committee or not, basically. I understand people's passion for this. I think we all do. We've gone through several days since this was brought up on Thursday. Quite frankly, there's been some emails and Facebook posts that I believe are inappropriate, but that's my opinion, and certainly you can disagree with that, but just not tonight. I guess I'll start things off. I appreciate everything that the COVID committee has done. They've worked hard on this. We've accepted their recommendations since the very beginning. It's a difficult job to have because of decisions that they make affect everyone, and I'd like to thank you with the acceptance of the few clients that we have who are listening and meeting and following the board more than anything else. This is a national issue. Anybody who picks up the paper knows that it's been a divisive issue on a national basis, on a state basis. I contacted the MSBA because I wanted to know how we do this meeting appropriately, and I got some suggestions. But the one thing that struck me this very first sentence is, you ain't the first ones to deal with this, Bob. This is an item across the state. We've had ignored among school board members that it buckled in the pressure and resigned. It's never been a higher number than this year. But for the most part, the people that have contacted us have referred to the statement that we only got a tough job to do. I think almost half the people, if not half the people, have their own opinion on this, and it differs from one side to the other. So it's been tough, it's been tough for my friends on the school board because I know they've worked hard on this, and I know they've had some sleepless nights because of the pressure that's been put on, either self-imposed or actual. And I do appreciate the people that have come here, we knew this was going to be a meeting to remember, and it has been. But I will say that when we start school, we expect the baseline to be zero. We work up from there. If it gets to be a certain level, I believe that we should be called upon to make some decisions, and I think those decisions should not only be in print, but we should have a diagram to follow. I think that I appreciate the fact that some have been proactive in this decision, and some parents have said, I think we should be reactive to this. That's what I'm feeling. So at this point in time, I would not support the COVID advisory committee, only because we're just two weeks away from school, we were prepared to go unmasked with rules behind that. And it's changed so dramatically that people somehow think that we're not listening, but we are listening. So it will be my position to go unmasked when the school begins. And that's where I'm coming from, and I hope we get to many more from all here. So I'm going to pass this down to the end.
Thanks, Bob. I just want to echo what Seth said, this has been a very difficult couple of days, and it's not a decision that I am taking lightly, and I've read every single email and thought about every single email that I've received. I listen to everything that was shared here. I want to echo that I think we all have the same goal in mind is to have our kids in school because we know that that's where we need to be. And I've been hearing a lot of tremendous fear for kids on both sides, and so I think that, you know, in a world that's increasingly divided, at least we can fight some common ground in that. As a new board member, as of January, this isn't necessarily the ongoing that I had thought I would receive. I knew that there'd be difficult decisions. I thought some of it would have to be about budgets that are in place that my kids wasn't being enough taught about the field. These are the decisions that I was expecting to make. And I think that somewhere between, you know, being preventative and having a reaction there is some of the world. I am, as a member of the COVID advisory committee, I am very appreciative of the work that that community has done. It has done what it needs. You know, I think we have fans or words like guidance and recommended and required because anytime you felt like you had a decision that was made, they used to play a role in you, and I've had to make some really tough calls. The COVID advisory meeting earlier in August, earlier this month, for me, I felt very cathartic. I felt like we had a shared understanding that the community and the advisory committee were obviously engaged. I think we tried to acknowledge that situations would and that they've changed. And I know the recommendation of the COVID advisory committee comes from a place of care and wanting to keep kids in school and try to do the best in front of us to do that. That being said, I would like to consider a recommendation, sorry I have a text here on my phone, that masks will be strongly recommended for individuals, for all individuals, that there may be situations where masking would be required, for example, still required for student transportation, which is required for the field having control of that, and to consider masking for close contacts in grades 3K through 6, and that we consider a threshold of 2% in either building to that we can let masks get in. That's my recommendation.
I have been very much in the midst with this topic. My community seems to change daily with everything, and I can see both sides, and both have very valid arguments regarding this case. I do personally believe that masks help with the mitigation of spread within the community, and I am to be a valid strategy against the spreading of COVID-19. They're not 100%, but I do believe they're helpful. I also tend to err on the side of caution in these situations, so while my personal preference would be a mask up and err with caution to start this school year, I don't necessarily think it's the right decision within this community at this time. Through the inherent pandemic we have at the board, follow the state guidelines and the state guidance, and we, when it was required, we did that, and when it was not, like right now, I believe we, the only fair thing to do would be to stay consistent with this approach to the pandemic and continue to follow the state guidelines, which is, which right now, of course, the mass choice for our families currently. Should the status change, I would expect us to change with it and follow any required state recommendations. Nobody likes to wear a mask, and I would every day, all day, at work as well, and it's not fun, it's not, you know, it's just not ideal, and it is not ideal, but I think the number one thing that I want to see is that our kids are in school as much as possible. And I just think that it's fair for us to stay consistent and follow the guidelines as we've been doing since the beginning.
Thank you. I agree with Katie, much of what they said. We have followed the guidelines from MDD that's been our philosophy last year, and currently they're not mandating masks or strongly recommending masks. We do not want to do this as something to do with the COVID change and the recommendation that cases have been arising with U County, and it's because they're substantial to hydrid transmission with U County, and we know that the O clinic, the CDC, MDD are all strongly recommending masks, vaccinations as our best defense against COVID. And we know they're not 100% or they're not, it's not a awareness or vaccination, or there's maybe risks there, and they're time-tested, or we would like them to be, but they're the best defense against the virus, especially the Delta variation, which is much more transmittal and more transmittable to kids. We know that the news last night, our hospital ICU started filling up again. We know that the news last night, our hospital ICU started filling again. And so we, you know, we need to take all these things into consideration. And I feel that, I guess I have a question about the 2% metric as far as starting out with masks. If that would be, that metric would be applied if we stay under 2%? Do we continue to mask or does that mean remove masks or reduce magic? It seems like it would be better to start with as the metric, possibly wearing wood magic masks. So that's kind of what I was saying. But we all agree we do want it just to be in school full-time possible of what Erin Lee said, for kids and the faculty as well. So we all want to do what's best for the community and the kids and our staff.
I think one of the more important things to keep in mind is we're not experts here. We're doing the best we can with the information available to us. I believe that I have read every email I've received. I have taken phone calls and text messages and Facebook messages. And I try to be as understanding and diplomatic as I can be. I think in general, our community has been very fortunate because we have not seen the numbers of people being sick or dying from COVID. And that is easy for us to act like it's not a big deal. I personally have family members that have, a set of family that had died from COVID and I don't wish that on anyone. I have a fourth grader and a seventh grader. And the seventh grader is vaccinated. My fourth grader is not yet. I worry about her. I have an employer that recently required masks for everyone, whether they're vaccinated or not. It's been a very small staff. And if someone is sick, it affects everybody. I worry about that in our schools too, that if someone has to be out, who's going to pick up the slack? Because we already know that we are looking at larger lessons and just overall use of resources. I've heard more about this issue than I have on anything else in my two and a half years on board. And honestly, I should have a pill about that because we've had a lot of big issues come up in those two years and I've never seen a problem like this. I hope that we have more input and attendance and participation. Because again, we're just six people who are here because we're trying to do the best for our kids and our community. We don't have all the answers. We need input from our community to help guide us. We're not always going to be. And like Bob said in the beginning, this feels unmitorable. We're going to walk out of here tonight and half the community is going to be mad at us for one reason and half is going to be mad at us for another reason. I think it's important to keep in mind that we are just people and we all want what's best. We just have a different idea of what that means.
Thank you. I think you go first. I guess I would like to kind of reflect a little bit on the COVID Advisory Committee meetings. I do remember on that, as Lou said, the first meeting was very informational. It was very helpful, I think, for the district members that were in attendance to understand where the community was. But it was also important and informative for the community to hear what the district had to go through, working with the Minnesota Department of Health and the recommendation of guidelines and guided words, the terminology and how it changed over the course of the year. And then the second meeting went a little differently based upon some guidance, I won't say guidance, but some data that was provided by our Goodview County nurse, which we used all of last year, working with data was driving our decisions based upon the information given. And with that information, we do have some COVID in Goodview County and in the school district. And I think that became an important factor for that community. And it became so divisive, I guess, in a way at the committee meeting that it almost became emotional and some were emotional. And I think that's important because that first meeting was really around hearing that everyone, community members, teachers, board members, want our kids in school. How do we get there? And that's what we're talking about. The ability to start school was initially, we want to have school be normal. I want to leave in the first meeting, that's what the understanding was. We want school to be as normal as possible for all of our students. And as Bob said, we're looking to start at ground zero. Our number is zero. But as of Thursday, really our number isn't zero. So it is concerning. And so I am happy to have heard from so many people. I've gotten emails, as you've heard, over the weekend, all through the day. I still have some that I just got that I haven't read yet. But this is some information that I got today. Currently, for the first two weeks of bodies in Goodview County, there's 189. Forty-seven of them are in Cannon Falls. The other majority are in Red Lake. And that was a question that was asked on Thursday. Are we talking about Cannon Falls or are we talking about Red Lake? They obviously knew that that was out of break in Red Lake. I think that's the concern for a lot of people in this community is what will the outbreak look like? And I think that was the question that I had in the initial plan and the new recommendation plan. Where do we go from here? What does that look like? If we have two invomar again this summer, do we have 25, 50 kids? Can we move from no mask to mask public management? That's the plan that I am looking for. I want to understand and work with everyone in a complete plan. And I think we're not there yet. So I'm asking for further discussion and looking for a complete plan.
I guess having heard from everyone and their relative positions on this on this, we need to deal with the resolution regarding adoption of the health and safety. And it says consideration to approve. So protocol would be that we would read the complete, the complete resolution, I guess. But I guess on page two, the resolution is a highlight area. And prevention strategies, we have used number two. And I would like to put Katie on the spot to read number two as to what are prevention strategies are right now? And I'll take the mic back because I think it's important for people to know what they are.
Correct style of those? Yeah. That I led it was?
Yep.
Number two. All staff, students and visitors within the Independent School District two-by-two buildings, regardless of vaccination status, are recommended to follow the strategies of physical distancing, hand washing and respiratory etiquette, cleaning and disinfection, contact tracing, screen testing and staying home when sick, as defined in the CDC guidance for COVID-19 prevention in K through 12 schools.
So hang on to that. Number five in the options, I can't turn her on because my neck doesn't do that anymore. But number one under the five options would be the recommendation forthcoming. And number four, I would like you to read both one and four, please. That's our present position.
Number one is the recommendation.
Number one is the recommendation of the COVID Advisory Committee, which is all staff, students and visitors within Independent School District two-by-two buildings must wear a mask regardless of vaccination status as specified in CDC guidance for COVID-19 prevention in K through 12 schools. A 2% metric was established by the committee to determine masking versus unmasking. The 2% metric language was not part of this original sample from MSBA that added by the Cannon Falls COVID Advisory Committee recommendation on 8/19/2021. And then number four, which is where we were at previously, if all staff, students and visitors within the Independent School District two-by-two buildings are recommended to wear a mask regardless of vaccination status.
There's one more, Bob. Vaccination.
So under vaccinations, it is all staff of Independent School District two-by-two should be vaccinated unless that person cannot be vaccinated because of medical condition or sincerely held religiously.
And is that a thing either? I don't know. Vaccination status or is that a stat or was?
No. It's time around the quarter.
So really the basis for people being here is to find out if we as a board are going to support the COVID Advisory Committee with this decision of number one, or to continue on with all staff, students, visitors recommending wearing a mask. The question that I'd like, or I guess the statement I'd like is whether or not we accept this, will we be able to have some mitigation process in order so that if it expands, are we prepared to go to mitigation process? Will we have a written document, if you will, to support that?
Yeah, once the board decides under the role of either accepting the COVID process or the new recommendation, or if they want to go in a different direction, we would come up with a plan to put out to the public, obviously. I can tell you that these are very high-level books. And when you talk about where the CDC is at and M D H with their decision tree as it is currently written, you need a roadmap to look at it. And so we would simplify that depending on what is decided. Here is the decision tree as it sits with CDC right now. And that would need to be simplified, obviously. If the board decided to go away from not masking, if that's what your question is, we would have something simple that parents could follow. If the board passes the recommendation, there would not be the, or need for those attacks.
Okay, so we're onto the meat of the meeting right now for most of you people. It's whether or not to approve the resolution regarding the adoption of the health and safety measures. And again, for our purposes and people that are here, it essentially comes down to whether or accepting the number one masking options or the number four that are currently in place. Fair to say?
I think you need to, to simplify things, I think you need to either accept or deny the COVID.
You need to navigate.
Advisory.
Option. Okay. One, another question.
I was wondering if we identified the 2% metric. What does that mean as far as if we start with masks and the rating increases to 2%? And then you say, you take them off? Then we already have a line. So I guess I can't understand how that metric would be applied.
The COVID Advisory Committee recommended a 2% metric based on total population, including staff, if I remember correctly. That on September 24th, there would be a review date to see where that metric lies at. And if we are for that metric, we would continue to mask. If the district is under that particular consideration, we're not masking. Is that any clear? And then that metric would, unless changed, would be used at specific review dates of that. That all?
Usually we take a motion in a second and then we get a response.
I just have a question. So we are, we're deciding, yes, we will start with masks, no, we will not start with masks? Like, or we're saying we will either not mask for the year's school year or we will absolutely not mask for the year's school year? What are we actually deciding?
I think we have to just decide on this, this specific resolution.
I think you need to either decide yes.
I don't have a idea what we're being asked to vote on.
The recommendation from the COVID Advisory Committee.
I still have a question on that.
Are we implementing anything tonight or are we going back to the original? I'm sure what outcome of this vote is going to be.
The current recommendation that I'm asking the board to either approve or deny is the recommendation from the COVID Advisory Committee, which includes
All the highlights.
The highlights, you know, so we have to put in the prevention strategies.
Yep, I understand all of that.
Yep. And so is the COVID Advisory Committee, you need to have approval because if we don't have approval, then we need to create a different, what is the plan? So that's kind of what we know.
So either we're going forward with this or we'll go back to the COVID committee for a different plan. Well, I guess that's, that's my question is if we don't approve the advisory committee's recommendation, what's next? That's what I'm asking. That's what I was hearing.
Well, I think the board needs to give us the direction.
Yep.
With that, if you don't approve it, then what would you like to see? Whether it's just COVID CDC days or something else? So I think that is the direction, I would say, that we need to go ahead and quantify what needs to happen.
I guess I was kind of in close comment. We're looking for more discussion and this document informs the sample. And so is it possible to have that discussion and come up with our own language and how we start, how we move through the school year, in and out of masks if needed? And what those numbers are, why 2% and understanding that?
I think you need to either accept or deny what their recommendation is first. And then if you accept it, that's what we move forward with. If you deny it, then we need to correct a new highlight of where are we going with this? Does that make sense?
So for the immediate future, if we accept it, we're moving forward with the recommendation. If we don't accept it, we go back to square one for the first day of school.
I would ask for a recommendation to approve this. If you get a first and a second, you can go to discussion, any more discussion. If you don't have any more discussion, then you can go to the vote. Okay, just to kind of
Okay, I would look for a motion from someone to approve the resolution, which includes the recommendations from the COVID Advisory. I would look, I read this three times. I look for the motion to approve the resolution as shown. For the final time, I am looking for a motion to approve the resolution for support from the COVID Advisory Team for their adoption of the health and safety measures. Okay, that fails for lack of motion. Which would mean to me that we're looking for admin to bring back some documents to us.
I think we need to give, I think we need to give admin some direction about what we want that to look like.
Yes, if the, if the board has denied this recommendation, you need to give us correction back to us about what is going to be accepted and passed.
Right.
Would be my say.
And good, so do you want to initiate a recommendation?
Well, I personally would like to see the, see us follow the Minnesota state guidelines as we have been throughout the entire, keep it consistent, and follow the guidance as we are given it by the state. We are funded by the state, we are, I would, I would like to see that happen. That's my two cents.
So you would be supportive of option four or masking these?
Yes.
Well, I have a question before I write to Steve or the metric, but I didn't have the mitigation for quarantine houses. You are, that was, I can't deal with that.
I think it should be a more proactive approach, at least for our residents that don't have an option to be vaccinated when we're talking about upper twelve and more, they have a choice of protecting themselves in multiple ways where our residents as yet cannot have that option.
I'll second that. I think, you know, there, there is some concern, you know, in the community of transmission at the early, I guess, the K three six that don't have the, the option. And parents don't have a choice in that matter. And as I mentioned earlier, and I think perhaps would be to, is what is the metric? We're going to start the year, if we go with option four, and we have an outbreak, what is that metric to go to masking? Because I think that, in my opinion, will be in a more likely case that we will have some sort of outbreak. And what, what do we need to do and how we address it?
Interesting, haven't you heard enough of direction? Yes, but I think we need, you know, we certainly, we, we need to have a special meeting if you guys are willing to approve a plan. Coming back, we need to have another COVID Advisory Committee, which with twenty people on that is not easy to put together. Are you looking for any, I, I heard one member say basically one different thing, I should say three members, but for one agreeing with another member, we need to have more input on that and agreement as to what this looks like. If it's going to, yes, we want to only follow NDAH and CDC, that's pretty cut and dry if they have a plan. And we don't even need to have board approval because that's what's currently in, in place. If you wish to add to that or proactive approaches for the K through six, and a metric for moving, we have a metric. If you don't like the metric, we need to decide on that now because that tells the group that we need to change the metric.
I could get on board with the proactiveness K through six.
What is proactiveness, can you define that, or possible with Mark?
It's not a matter of that, but anything that masking for the other children, I want them to, that is possible.
Until they have that.
Until they have a choice to be vaccinated.
I can get on board with that.
So, okay. I'm hearing two different things here. I'm hearing no masking, but are you suggesting that we do mask?
I do not, yes, K six.
Okay.
Or K, K through five, because maybe it does.
Or, yeah.
Again, no, it's possible. Three H twelve. But I don't know how easy that is going to be to.
Six can determine twelve.
Yes.
You're open, so depends on how you want to, would manage that, which.
There would be yes regardless of what we, but that, I think, exists.
K, K through five, that's an easy, that's a good place.
They also put more hide, and it's sharing space for the same kids that are working around, or those who are in the school.
So are you saying K through five?
Sure.
Are you saying indoor only?
Yes.
We don't need this, we're trying to make some decisions made. And at this point in time, you know, there's a number of things that we can do here, and one of them would be to have people leave here. We want, we want some input and we receive some input, not having some.
You're not listening to the evidence. If evidence, not a mask, we have no evidence. You know evidence, no mask. You're having sixteen, sixteen people should not choose for a whole town what is done.
These are our, okay. The taxes.
Yeah, you're not funded by the state, you're funded by us.
We're writing.
Stick with number four, let's get out.
Four, K through twelve, four.
We got people telling us what to do. You can't get it figured out.
This is not.
You know, we've, we've heard some people speak at COVID. And the decision is, I don't take it lightly when you say it's not for the six of us to decide for your child. And I would agree with that, but to a point. We are here to decide the safety in the transition state of this school. And so when we, when a child comes to school that is sick and has no symptoms, they're affecting the rest of the school. That's the point that we're looking at as a school board. It's not taking away your decision, in fact, it's trying to protect the school as a whole.
Other towns are laughing at us.
And so many communities in our state have the same thing going on, and if not this, then other, other. I'm going to call a ten minute recess here. Please sit around, but please check in the courtroom because we can easily just end the meeting. And even without things, we're doing our best here. We didn't pass, we didn't pass the very resolution that you were here for. We're trying to have some little discussion about things, but we can't get shut down, and we can't communicate, and you can't hear. Ten minutes.
Black hole sucks, you can't get it out of a dark black place, just understand that. R S V sucks.
My nephew, my nephew was in the hospital for R S V, and they didn't have a bed for him for three days. He had to stay in the emergency room bed because they didn't have a spot for him, so, yeah. There are people that disagree with you, we have to listen to everyone.
Number five was the resolution regarding the adoption of the health and safety measures. There was no motion, there was no second. So in my mind, that's at this point in time in our rearview mirror. Although we need, we're asking for some confrontation, conversation about strategy, and what's acceptable strategy. And it's a, it's difficult for us, and we're trying our best to be civil within here, and that's a two way street. Help us out here, we'll, we'll have conversation, but we don't need the shout outs. And I know it's passionate for you, but we don't need the shout outs. We do have the op, the option of clearing the room, but what does that solve? What does that solve for any of us? It creates more of a schism than we have right now. Let's try to hold together here, please listen to the conversation. And if we can't, if we can't have any civil discourse here, then we'll have it, we'll have it without spectators who wants that. I've also heard that our proofing sucks. Is that true? Is it worse for some than others? I want to be able to have you guys all hear this clearly.
Your mic's pretty bad, Bob.
What's that?
Your mic's pretty bad.
Mine is?
Yeah. Can you hold it a little closer?
Yeah, I can do all of that, I can hang it on to it. I can hang it on to it because when I said it, now the spout's coming, so I didn't want to hang on to it. I'm a good writer.
Yeah.
My apologies, I thought I was a good one. So we need to talk strategies. My biggest concern is that school starts in a couple of weeks. What are we going to be able to organize and put on the table? Right now, we're, we're talking maskless.
We're talking people, not when we say maskless, we're not, I'm not mask mandate, I want to clarify, people who want to wear a mask can wear a mask, or sometimes.
Is it a mask optional, would that be a statement to the?
Mask recommending is not required.
I just think it's an important clarification.
Yes, it's the correct clarification, of course. So I'm looking through some guidance from the board members, there's certainly areas here that caused immediate dissension and immediate argumentation that we, we need to pull ourselves back together on. The conversation needs to focus on, in my opinion, strategies. If the, if COVID activity is at hand. Okay, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. So where do we go with that, that we can follow guidelines? There's also, I guess there's also districts out there that we can, we can feed from their information on that they already, maybe they're just ahead of us, maybe they've got some, some valid plans that we can package into, which is what we'd like to do, is if we can use other people and they've got a, they've got a valid plan, would you at least take a look at that? So I guess, seeing I'm kind of, I'm kind of open here, I'm kind of confused as to where the best question to go with right now. It would seem like day one, we are mask optional.
Mask recommend.
Mask recommend.
Mask recommending is not required. So I'm going to ask today.
I don't know if this is the right order to do this in, but can we make a motion at this point? Or how does that work?
We can't make a motion, but we don't have a.
What, can I make a motion?
That's the point, we don't have this on our agenda to make a motion in other direction, and we can add it, most certainly. I'm not sure if it's exactly the legal way to do it, but we can certainly do it.
Throw out the language, what I'm the best.
I guess I just would, I would really like to see us stay consistent and calm within and follow the guidelines that were given and strongly recommended, not required until the state would change that recommendation and make it required. Then we follow that because it becomes more of a I'm not going to not follow. Let's just put it that way when it comes to I just feel like at this point in the game, we need to stay consistent. We've always said the reasoning for our mask mandate last year was because we were following the state guidelines. And I feel like we really need to stay consistent and follow the state guidelines now. That's just my feeling about it at the state.
We will, my understanding is that with the MDE and MDH does not have the ability to require a mandate, correct? At this point in time?
They have guidelines that we got that are following from CDC and MDH. Just so that you're clear on this, what the ETE is saying, incredibly wrong, is that you just wish to follow the MDH and the CDC guidelines as they are written. Correct? That includes mask requirements on transportation.
Absolutely.
Buses.
As a federal mandate, yeah.
It requires the school district to notify, or I should say, report positive cases to the state. We are to notify close contacts. But close contacts are not required quarantine.
Correct.
Okay. I believe that is the gist of it. And so it's really, the only requirements are the masking on buses and transportation in general. And then the reporting of cases to the CDC or to the state, I should say. And then we would send positive cases home.
Correct.
Can you elaborate on the close contact and what it would be like if there is a positive case?
So if there is a positive case under this scenario, close contacts would be decided on. And that was different in both the K-5 building and the 612 building. Close contact parents would be, or parents of the close contact would be notified once they have gone out and that parent. It strongly suggested those close contacts quarantine. Again, that's a suggestion or a recommendation that are not required at this point.
Answer your question.
And I would hope that parents would take the road of being respectful and if kids are showing symptoms, would keep them home. That is my, that is my hope on that. That parents would be responsible for this freedom that they're given to make sure they're protecting the other kids in the classes.
You like that light?
No.
Okay, pass it this way, please.
We don't ask questions out here at all, or no?
Is that a motion? Because you said you wanted to make a motion.
I would like, well, I would like to make this work.
Okay, I just want to A notch.
I don't know how that works.
If a motion is required here, would just directly you vote?
You'd have to vote.
You'd have to vote on it.
All right.
So yes.
Excuse me for not making any comment.
There's a question.
Things can die here as a hurry. So what would a motion be in a more concise fashion for you?
I just want to do this right.
Yeah.
Okay, so my motion would be, I would be making a motion to use the sample measures requirement for the resolution. So continuing to use the number two in the prevention strategies as highlighted. And going to number four as we were. And keeping the vaccination at the same of number two.
That's a normal, Mr. Johnson?
That's a good start. Yes, because that gives us some noble direction. But she would need a second to get to that.
Right. So that would be my motion.
Having understood that, would there be a second?
A second.
Rebecca, on the second. More discussion, please.
As I've said, I do want more discussion on this. I understand that we're going back to where we started two weeks, two and a half weeks ago. And I'm comfortable with that, but the issue that I still want to bring up is what happens as we move forward in school year. And I think that's where separately, if we agree to this motion, then the administration has a continued plan in place to deal with an outbreak.
If this passes and ever, you know, we can certainly have another COVID advisory committee meeting after school begins, probably shorter than September 24th, as our answer to this plan. Just to talk these things, people saying, okay, we're off and running. Now what? Maybe this is the question that comes forward with that metric of how do we manage this then? Moving forward around that outbreak, and what does that look like? In this document, it does give administration and superintendent the authority to make quick decisions as the last years did. We use that once when things got really hard for them in April. And obviously, having those ongoing conversations as obviously, there's some discourse between the community, and I'm sure among the staff also, that we can keep having these conversations and how to deal with outbreaks. To me, it's easy to sit back and say, just follow the guidance. That isn't quite fair for me as a school leader. I don't like having all one side or all the other side. There should be some over on any extent. And it's pretty easy to say out there and say, no, this is the right answer. Well, no, it's not. But for me to manage that on a day-to-day basis with 1,100 kids and approximately 180 staff, that's asking a lot. And yeah, you can, I do expect the fact that you want to give everyone choices for your families. I get that. But unfortunately, when, if I made a choice that only affected me and my family, that's one thing. But with airborne particles, that affects everybody around me. Whether you're masked or unmasked. Do I believe masks work? Eh, I can go back and forth some days because I've seen it happen. Not saying that I'm completely anti-mask or completely for-mask. I just don't know, but I'm not a doctor either. I've heard different studies on different things and it just still, it's tough and it's not easy work. But Katie, with her saying that we did follow along with what the state did last year, yeah, we did as a COVID advisory committee. And we know too that because we're not going to just pick and choose which ones we want to follow. Do we do that again this year? Makes sense to me on some level. But I do worry about outbreaks. Because people can sit back in their armchairs and quarterback this pretty easily until they're the one sitting up here on stage. Jeff, what are you going to do about it? Well, the community wants this. Well, that's not working. So that's my two cents, I guess. And the conversation needs to continue to happen, obviously.
Then I'll mess up. We have a motion and a second to use sample number two. And number four, and follow that at this point in time. The COVID advisory committee can meet again. But for now, I'd like to get off this edge and move forward. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion?
I just wanted to ask about the extension of the measure and quarantine policy. Would that be part of what we go on and could that be determined later by an COVID ready?
I think that's two different. You asked about a quarantine policy? I think that's two different discussions. I don't know if that's what's in Katie's motion right now and a second.
Are we going to add to this that we're going to follow the MDE regulations?
Yep, the MDE and CDC quarantine policies that is of appearance.
Okay, motion and a second to follow the MTH CDC, which means sample number two, sample number Okay.
So I'm hearing you have a conversation about concern for K through five in terms of having, that's, obviously, that's the age group in terms of not being fully vaccinated and why we have somebody issues that are just replaced. I'm just curious about, you know, the idea of a classroom where there is a close contact. Do we look at masking by classroom, the classroom to classroom? To allow students to stay as a living factor for that period of time?
So I think they have a positive case in the classroom.
Yeah, that's a confirmed case, a confirmed case, that the rest of the class can stay in school and now.
So targeting masking. If things got to that point, would be to target individual classrooms in K through five, which those are all part of. If there is a positive case, we'll use, Ms. Peterson is an example, she's sitting back there. If her classroom has a positive case and that species would be sent home, the rest of the children in that classroom would be needing close contacts because, as some of our people say, we lick each other every morning. They run around and they're within a total of 15 minutes of each other throughout the day because that's what elderly kids do, they're all over the place. And so that's why we need them in close contact with each other. That group would be asked to mask for the two weeks. Children would stay in school, but they would wear masks as a mitigation strategy. Parents still have the option to pull them off if they wish. But at the end of those two weeks, if there's no more positive cases, that would be the end of the masking for that group until the next positive case. This idea was brought up not last week, but the week before at an HBL superintendent's meeting. Byron has implemented that, Lake City has implemented that as a strategy. That is an option, I think, then as maybe even as an in-between option. In-between solution, I guess, at this point, if that makes sense. Again, that can be talked about later. That was not part of your
That can be talked
That can be talked about with the COVID advisory committee, again, as a mitigation strategy. As a tool in the toolbox, I guess.
So once more, we have a motion and a second on the floor to accept sample number two and sample number four. We are working progress on that. So any discussion now? All in favor of Katie's motion?
It is a resolution.
Sure it is. And where would you agree from?
Sample measures requirements for the resolution.
I would say now be resolved.
Okay, where is that? Now be resolved.
Unless you want to read the whole thing, but it's all
No, that's okay. Now, the Department of Health is over independent school district number two by two's fault. The superintendents here by directive, you can implement following health and safety measures to over the 2021, 2022 school year.
You would go to the first?
The prevention strategies.
Number two.
Number two, do you want me to deal with you?
That's up to you.
All staff students and visitors within independent school district two by two abilities regardless of vaccination status are recommended to follow the strict strategies of physical distance, hand washing, respiratory etiquette, cleaning and disinfection, contact tracing, screening, testing, and staying home sick as defined in the CDC guidelines for COVID-19 prevention in HHS schools. Masking, number four, all staff students and visitors within independent school district two by two abilities are recommended to wear a mask regardless of vaccination status. Vaccination, all staff of independent school district two by two should be vaccinated unless that person may not be vaccinated because of a medical condition or is sincerely health related. So what would be, ah?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Anna?
No.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
And Katie, yes?
Katie, yes?
Yes.
One.
Okay, we are finished with that portion, number five. And we're moving on to number six, consideration to approve 21, 22 Menter program.
I think you just, go on, sorry. Yes, this is the yearly item that approves our Menter program for the year.
It's something that's been on the list for a while.
Yes, this is the Menter program for our new teachers and even subjects.
I would look for a motion to approve the Menter program.
I'll make the motion.
And on the motion, second?
A second.
Second, Rebecca? Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Here, consideration to approve the resolution of our reselling transport in the general fund to the food service fund.
Yes, we need this authorized as we have in the past few years because of the food service fund that's been done and negative that's in our heart as well, having the resolution intact as we are working on the audit. And if there's a fund transfer necessary, we should be careful. Is that accurate, Jeff?
Yeah, it's being placed just in case the food service has a
Yeah, it needs to be in place just in case the food service ends up in a deficit. We're allowed to transfer from general fund to cover that deficit.
Okay. We need a motion to approve, and it is a resolution. Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Katie on the motion, second?
I'll second.
Second, the lady Bill. Other discussion?
Whereas Minnesota statute 124D doc 111, subdivision three, divides the criteria and process for Minnesota school districts to transfer funds from the general fund to the food service fund. And whereas the school district two patch two has determined that a transfer of funds is necessary to eliminate the deficit in the food service fund. Be it your rec. all the school district two fifty-two that to transfer dollars from the general fund to the food service fund. Bob?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
And Katie, yes?
Given that passed by a six zero vote. Considerations to approve the updated, the updated fall coaching list. Anything to add, Ray?
No, just a couple late additions and subtractions as well.
Okay. So if you have a chance to review that or have any questions to read, otherwise I'd look for a motion to approve the amended or updated fall coaching list.
I'll make the motion.
Rebecca on the motion?
I'll second.
Second, the lady Anna? Other discussion? All in favor of the fall coaching list update, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie, consideration to approve the family medical leave act request from October 5th for 12 weeks.
This is for teacher regional here. She is a sixth grade teacher. I write it in approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Katie on the motion? Rebecca on the second? Other discussion? All in favor of the family medical leave act, press say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Can this be ordered, Brenda?
I should like to make a motion in the interest of time that we table this discussion for a future meeting. It's not, it's not necessary for getting it done right now since it won't affect this fall anyway. Can we just move it?
Yeah, I think it goes to the end of the annual, probably to review what we need to look at all the times. It's always good to see the goals and counts and everything. So we haven't really reviewed it since we located it a number of years ago. So it is a discussion item. Anna's request to just table it because there's no time to see what's here, seeing real thing.
I'll second.
Yeah.
Okay, so no need for an action item. We will just table this provision and discuss it at another time. Information on meeting the next regular school or meeting is September 27th at 6:00 PM. Among that would be the approve the proposal, any certification for officially 22 and whatever else comes up that we need to discuss. So it's been what I mean. I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Brenda and who?
I second it.
Rebecca? Brenda on the motion to adjourn. Rebecca on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.